Twenty twenty-four.
The call, a meeting of a service committee meeting, time is six o'clock. Call to order. People in attendance, Erin Scher, Zion Hickman, I myself, Chris Maritz, Chair. Kevin Myers is absent. Like to open up to the public for public participation at this point. Seeing none, approval for the minutes for February eighth, twenty twenty-four, regular service council meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Like I'd open up for bond requirements.
All in favor?
All in favor, excuse me, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Now I'd like to open up for bond requirements.
Does it have been passed?
Hmm?
The minutes have been...
Oh, the minutes have been passed, sorry.
I can do it.
Thank you.
You're okay.
So, bond requirements was, we had been, this administration through the service director typically issues permits, and Tommy's gonna correct me if I'm wrong, but permits to operate in the utility right-of-ways. Recently with the Omni Fiber and some other different people that are operating in our right-of-ways, there's been some significant damage, not only to water lines, but gas lines and other things that are located down in the right-of-ways. We can't necessarily keep people out of the right-of-way, but we do have the right to issue those permits and have requirements on those permits. And so the service director and the mayor came up with a new policy requiring, prior to issuing a permit, a million-dollar bond would have to be posted. And so we've done that through administrative policy, but I think that it would be better and put everybody on notice if we now went back and put it in the BCS certified ordinance requiring, prior to the service director issuing those permits, that we have the one million-dollar bond posted. And I have language that we've actually provided to them that I can put together an ordinance and I don't think that it needs to be an emergency since we kind of did it administratively, but it would be best-case scenario to now do it legislatively as well, just to have it in writing.
So, I wanna propose ordinance for the bond requirements?
Mm-hmm. You'd ask it, yeah, if anybody...
Asking if anybody...
Asking if anybody wants to...
Make a motion.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sherrick.
I'll second that motion. To create legislation for bond requirements.
Right. In the, yeah, in the public utility right-of-way.
In the public utility right-of-way. And then it's all in favor again.
Members all in favor again?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Material bids?
Tommy Starnes, Service Safety Director, material bids are yearly thing that come out. We go to bid for each of our materials that we may use, the stones and things like that. We don't have to, when we bid for the amount of tonnage we get, we necessarily may or may not use that. But this is a, this will be going out hopefully tomorrow, or no, it has to, it has to go through a council, right?
We have a special council meeting later.
Today.
Today. So if you explain this, then Mrs. DeShawn's going to explain a technical procedure issue that we have, and then I'm going, and then I'm going to explain how we can get around said issue, and then we're gonna do it at a later meeting today.
Oh, yeah, that's, I remember that now, so.
I think that's how it will work.
Right. So that's pretty much the material, uh, material.
And you submitted that list to council, correct?
Yes.
You guys have the list of all of the stuff?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, Tommy, thank you, Tommy.
And this goes to Finance after us, correct?
It should. Mrs. DeShawn, I think that's your cue.
Vicki DeShawn, eleven oh eight Hill Crest Drive. I'd send an email to the law director telling him that I noticed that the material bids were just referred to the service committee, but they also need to go to the finance committee as well, and they were not referred to Finance. So I will now have the law director explain how we can correct that problem.
Were they not sent to Finance previously, though? Because we were trying to get them done before and then whatever hit the fan and stopped that process.
I own Finance and there was never material bids on our agenda.
I was thinking it was right there at the end of the, no, it should be in the open projects because I thought that they sent the material bids to Finance right at the end of this last, so they should have been in open projects. I can't promise that they made it to open projects just because everything was crazy. But I thought that we talked about those right there in December.
In December?
Yeah.
No, because Bruce, or the mayor, is the one who...
Well, I mean, but remember somebody else was trying to get them through before and that's when we kind of put a hold on it, but it had been sent, they sent it to committee, but nobody would talk about it because the last mayor wasn't supposed to be making those decisions. There's a couple of those things that got sent to committee because they were trying to get them through before leaving. I thought that was one of them.
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
I know what you're talking about, but I don't think that was material bid.
That was when we were establishing the membership of the Stormwater Utilities Appeals Board.
There was, there was a couple of things like that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I thought material bids had come up at some point in there, too, because it was like a last-ditch effort.
I'm not seeing it on finances and open stuff, so.
Right. So, I think that service, you guys would approve putting that out for bid, correct? And so then council as a whole, we have a special council meeting tonight to discuss material bids, right? And so council as a whole can waive the requirement that it first go through committee and then come back out of committee, and then you can also prepare and ask for an authority been prepared emergency legislation, and then as long as six of you vote that we pass the, do away with the three reading requirement, and then as long as two, yeah, two-thirds of you vote that we can waive the rule requiring it to go to committee, council as a whole can pass the material bids tonight, which would then keep us on track to publish tomorrow or whenever we get.
So can service request the legislation?
It should come from Finance because it's spending money, so council as a whole is going to request it, but we've...
Okay, up through here.
Yeah, you guys have discussed it and approved it, or not approved, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of material bids list.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Now, I have a question. Because our council president is not here.
And I've heard that you have been...
No, absolutely not. No, 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 no. That I will say no to.
Mrs. Sherrick has the longest-standing...
There's no Ms. here, Mom.
Miss Sherrick is the longest-standing member of City Council, and I think she could do it. Kevin is, but in the, in the ordinance, in the BCO, it says that you guys will appoint a member of your body, and I think Ms. Sherrick just volunteered. But we can sort that out when we get to that meeting.
All in favor of the approval?
All in favor of the approval?
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Good job. I don't have anything to talk about on open projects tonight.
Nothing on open projects tonight, anyway. Open to a public, public again, participation?
Six oh nine.
Six oh nine?
You're gonna call adjourned.
Adjourned at six oh nine?
Safety Committee, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
I call the Health and Safety Committee to order at six thirteen P.M. Members present are C. Erin Scherrick, James Me, and myself, Vicki DeShawn. And before I forget, can we at this time excuse Kevin Myers?
Yeah. As I said, we don't really have to actually ask to excuse him, just mention that he's not here.
Oh, okay, fine.
Versus the regular meeting, then we'll have to excuse him.
Okay, understand. Then, Mr. Myers is absent this evening. First, before we do public participation, for transparency purposes, I would like to let the public know that at our last council meeting this past Tuesday, we, we meaning me and the law director, we referred to the Health and Safety and Service Committees, the Resolution Number Two eighteen, twenty twenty-one, and the permanent agreement which dealt or deals with the Bratwurst Festival and the fact that right now the city is not charging the festival for cleanup services and safety force services. Again, referred to Health and Safety and Service, should not have been referred to those two committees, should have been referred to Finance. I did some research and went back to like two thousand fourteen, and it's always been in service. So, just so people know, pardon?
Finance.
Or Finance, excuse me, thank you. So that people know that that's why we're not talking about it tonight, because it's not in our committee anymore. We will refer it to Finance. This, yeah, the next council meeting, we will refer that to Finance. Okay, so next we have public participation. If anybody wishes to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Bill Stuckert, two zero five North Spring Street. Regarding the formation of an ad hoc committee to review and revise the Property Maintenance Code for the City of Bussiris, I want to clarify my suggestion for the members of the committee. Although it is not my decision as to who should be on the committee, I believe there should be a mix of people from the Health and Safety Committee, the Property Maintenance Appeals Board, and the residents of Bussiris. I suggest a minimum of seven members for the ad hoc committee, but you could consider more if you desire. The following is my suggestion for a seven-member committee. First of all, I suggest two members of the Health and Safety Committee be on the ad hoc committee because property maintenance is an issue of public health and safety. Secondly, I suggest two members of the Property Maintenance Appeals Board should be included because, just as the name of the board suggests, the board is responsible for deciding on issues of notices of property maintenance violation appeals. And last but not least, I suggest the inclusion of three people who are residents and/or resident property owners of the City of Bussiris because the property maintenance codes are meant for them to adhere to for the health and safety of themselves, their families, their neighbors, and all the residents of the City of Bussiris. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have, or I guess I should ask for a motion to approve the February eighth, twenty twenty-four Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Sherrick, second by me, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next we have the penalty, oh, I'm sorry, I guess I should have asked, was there anybody else that wanted to speak, public participation? I'm sorry. I was on a roll there.
Good evening. I'm Milton Underwood. I'm President of the Crawford County West Joint Ambulance District, also a trustee down in Dallas Township. It looked like there was gonna be some, or some discussion tonight on the staffing for the fire department, and as y'all know, and we appreciate the vote the other night on that Resolution Two oh seven, twenty twenty-four, the contract with the city and the West Side Ambulance District. We've had really good service with the guys. I'm usually outrunner, I'm also volunteer fireman in Dallas Township, and usually I always respond to any of the incidents we have, and I've got nothing but praise for the guys that have come out, and they professional and do a good job, and it's, it's really working, working great. About the possible staffing cuts, we were expecting to have the, the contract as six, six men per shift and three squads available. So if it's, if it's cut to less than that, that's gonna greatly affect the, possibly affect the response time out in the coverage area for our West Side Ambulance District. So, I mean, we're, we're talking two hundred forty-three thousand a year for three years, so it's roughly close to seven hundred and twenty thousand plus dollars. And then I was gonna have the figure on the loaded runs of what you, you'll be, what you're collecting on that. So, this money plus on top of that is, is revenue that the, through the city fire department that the city can collect back to pay the bills. So, I just wanted, just wanted to come up and, and mention that. Fire Department's doing a good job, and I got a good working relationship with them, and hopefully the, might take that into consideration for discussion on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, next we'll go to the penalty fee for Bussiris Codified Ordinance One eighty-nine point two-two. I didn't know, Kaylee, did you want to read your...
I can do it now, or I can do it now, or I can do it during Finance, I can go ahead and just do it now?
Well, we have to hear it first, and then...
Yeah.
Then we pass it on to Finance, yeah.
So I went ahead and submitted this little thing to Miranda, I'm sure you have read it or have it in front of you, just says, "Codified Ordinance One eighty-nine dot twenty-two requires landlords to annually complete tenant rosters and turn the forms into the Bussiris City Income Tax Administrator by November thirtieth of each year. These rosters are important for the collection of income taxes and to ensure proper filing from citizens within the city. Last year, the Income Tax Office sent out over four hundred and forty tenant rosters and received back less than half. Some of the information from tenant rosters can be retrieved from the water office, but if the landlord does not require the tenant to put the utilities in their name, the city does not receive the information, resulting in potential missed revenues for the city. After speaking to the Assistant Income Tax Administrator, we believe the best motivator to get landlords to turn in their tenant rosters, which they're already required to submit, would be to instate a fee. Regarding an amount, we believe the fee should be impactful enough for larger landlords and out-of-town property management companies to be spurred to turn in their rosters. The Income Tax Department and I would like council to consider a fee of up to five hundred If you have any questions, more than happy to answer.
And the law director prepared draft verbiage for that. I'm trying to find mine. I don't know, Mr. Gendert, did you want to...
Throw some...
I...
I wasn't sure if you were ready with...
That was just to put that together for a talking point, and so I kind of just, in my mind, came up with a fee for late filers and if you get it in, so it's supposed to be in by November thirtieth, if you get it in within the month by December thirty-first, you get hit with one sort of penalty. If it's after that December thirty-first date, you get hit with a second, higher penalty. And then if this is a yearly problem, then you get hit with the five hundred dollar penalty. But, I mean, we could kind of do however we wanted. And then on the enforcement end, I made it a civil penalty where if you didn't pay, I would probably have to file like a small claims complaint against you. I suppose we could also make it a criminal penalty and make it like an unclassified misdemeanor, which unclassified misdemeanors would be up to, I think up to thousand-dollar fine and up to five hundred dollars, five hundred hours of community service. But I figured there should be some avenue in the end, if you don't file your roster and don't pay your fine or your penalty, giving somebody, me, or the law director's office, the authority to collect in some manner. But I kind of came up with that on the whim, so I didn't know exactly what...
I personally would like some more time to read over this. I don't know what the rest of the committee, I don't think this is a rush.
No, you're good.
All right, and if it's not due till November thirtieth, we have, we can get it in place before November thirty.
Mr. Me?
So if, I'm gonna put this, what is the projected loss of revenue are we looking at?
We don't have that number because we don't know how many land, because of the drafting number of tenant rosters we don't receive. They could be harmless, they could just be people not turning them in because they don't want to, but for instance, if someone doesn't require the tenants to put the water bill in their name, and they have a, those tenants work in jobs outside of Bussiris, live within Bussiris, and those jobs don't withhold income tax, or their payroll systems don't, then that would be income tax that the, that the City of Bussiris could claim, but we don't have access to. Because we don't have, there's so many out, we don't have a good estimate for what even, what that number could be. It could be a good amount of money, it could be, you know, just depends, it depends what people turn in.
So could this be an avenue for people with overdue water bills that left the landlords with those bills?
Mm-hmm.
Could that be an avenue that the water department could use to find those people, since the water's not in their name?
So you're asking if they could like use...
Share information.
I would have to check, I'm not, I don't want to say yes because it's income tax information.
Brian?
But I can...
Maybe.
Maybe?
That's something that's subpoenaable, though, isn't it?
So significant amounts of the income tax information are not disclosable, but tenant rosters might be, I don't know, I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
And then so also there would be like intra-office disclosure, so like disclosure within the city, and then somebody from the outside trying to get access to those as well. So those are different rules for, you know, I mean, I think that in collection activity, could the auditor, well, it's your office, so yes, the auditor can use her own records. I don't know, I would have to look about what, what would be our responsibility as far as maintaining those records and where they could be used.
So my next question would be, I'm gonna use Kenny as a, since he comes to all the meetings, if somebody sticks Kenny with a big water bill and he goes ahead and pays it, and we find that person, can we use that information to get, recoup his money back?
Can we, as the city?
Yes, if we found that person and seen they have an overdue water bill that Kenny's already paid, can you recoup that money back?
I, I don't know, I'll have to look at it.
Okay.
Same question, different, yeah, I get what you're saying.
Same question, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not, yeah.
So...
So are we...
So we are all gonna look at it a little longer.
Okay, so we're gonna put this on hold for now?
Yeah.
Or table it till, table it till the next meeting?
Sure.
You're right. Also have to be some sort of logical distinction between, you know, somebody millennia housing that owns the Bussiris Plaza has, I don't know, eighty units out there, and the other guy that has ten units. I don't know that the fee schedule should be the same, but those are just things that, when you're looking at that, that you can think about and we'll talk about later.
That was my other question, but I forgot to.
I don't know, you know, I...
And there's in-town landlords and out-of-town landlords, too, so. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the fire department staffing, the repealing of ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-three.
Tommy Starnes, Service Safety Director, I'd like to, as Mr. Underwood said, fire department's doing a great job, it has nothing against them, is doing a great job, they, they definitely do a good job at squad and stuff like that. I'd still like to have the consideration to repeal that ordinance, and in order for us to have a conversation with the fire department, to work through some of this, some of this overtime issue that they have going on right now. Right now they're, our hands are tied, they're, they pretty much are running the show, so that's all I got.
Thank you.
Good night.
Sure.
So, right, and they did have a meeting, but because right now the setup is, it's in an ordinance, they, the fire department really isn't necessarily in a position where they're eager to negotiate, because it's difficult to negotiate against yourself, I guess. And I know that some of the creative ideas, and to kind of appease staffing issues, I don't think that anybody says that we're jumping to four-person minimum staffing year round, or twenty-four hours a day. One idea that was pitched at the last council meeting was having the chief of the fire department count as one of the people towards that minimum staffing, and when we met with the fire department, that didn't come out of those negotiations. They didn't want to have, do that on paper. A lot of things that they're willing to consider, but, but not look at anything concrete on paper, and I think the general block is because it's hard to negotiate against yourself. And I know that the administration, the previous administration, as well as this administration, has done some data collection about run numbers throughout the day, as well as run numbers throughout the night. And so one idea would be to peel back and have a, you know, four-person minimum staffing during non-peak hours, which would be defined as eleven to six or something, or ten to seven, I don't, whatever the hours are, those are things that the administration would like to discuss. But while this ordinance is in place, it doesn't seem that we're getting much traction talking to the union about that. But it's also important that we're still going to maintain six people throughout all of these. These are, staffing numbers would only be on periods where people are calling off, and so like if somebody called off during the day, hopefully one of the concessions that the fire union would make was to allow the chief to fill in during that time, and these aren't long-term fixes. I mean, I think that we have to look at revenue generation and other issues, but that would be a way that the union has indicated would cut approximately ninety thousand dollars if the fire chief was able to be one of the bargaining unit members, and he wouldn't be considered a bargaining unit, but he would fill in. Because right now it says we have to have a bargaining unit member, and that's not the fire chief. So they have pitched that would save the city approximately ninety thousand dollars. Obviously, the chief doesn't want to, and nor can he run on all calls all day because he has administrative duties, but that would be something, and it would only be in those instances when somebody had called off for a vacation day or something to that effect. The overnight staffing, if we were to do something to that effect, it wouldn't, we would always have six people, but if somebody would call off at those hours from whatever we define, whatever the administration and the union decide, say, you know, eleven to seven A.M., maybe we go down to four people when we're typically getting one call every five hours, was the math that I've seen before. So we were not saying that, as, as the city's negotiating position, we're not saying that we want only four people moving forward. We want our six people, but we also want the flexibility to make creative cuts or creative fixes by using the chief of the fire department, by using non-peak hours and not paying as much overtime during some of those non-peak hours while we try to get this budget other control in other ways. And I guess, when we're talking to the service director and the mayor, one of the problems we have when we try to negotiate is it's difficult... it's difficult for the union to negotiate against themselves. And so if we had this repealed, that would put it to where they, we could come up with some agreements where maybe both sides could give and take a little bit more freely.
Mr. White?
My name is Greg White, 11125 Hellcrest Drive. I think this repeal is stupid, plain and simple, okay? When a person calls 911, they have a medical emergency, whether it's a heart attack, a car accident, or someone fell off a ladder that needs a medic service, okay? Now you're playing with people's lives, and the expected level of service that they have got. This, the Fire Department, yes, I understand that Mr. The Law Director has a issue with staffing levels, but I think what you guys need to do is put this on hold until the union and administration can get together and talk things out first, come back with all the facts and figures, okay? Not just hearsay, but actual facts and figures to show where this needs to be repealed or not. And once again, you know, if someone has a heart attack at 2 o'clock in the morning, it's not planned, okay? Or someone gets in an auto accident out there, it might not be planned. But if we don't have emergency services available for critical patients, someone's gonna die. Okay? The response times are gonna be slower, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would say too that the administration did meet with the union, and their recommendation was to put minimum staffing in the contract, which would then make it legally binding, and the administration would be completely without any authority to ever manage the Fire Department. So put it in the contract, make it contractual, so no longer could council do anything, no longer could the administration do anything. And the only time that they would contemplate changing anything would be once the city declared fiscal emergency. That was the negotiation. So at this point, our hands are cuffed. We have to make difficult decisions. And I understand, yes, nobody plans on having a heart attack. And I'm not saying that that's what the union or the city would come up with, but I'm, at this point, we're going to continue to sit on our hands and not be able to do anything, and not be able to negotiate in good faith if we don't have some leverage in the bargaining process. I guess that's why I think it's important for the playing field to be equalized.
And I will say that I've talked with the chief on two separate occasions. I asked him, now that there's a new administration and a new council, if the union would consider, for lack of better words, coming back to the table and sitting down and looking at the money situation and the overtime. And I was told both times, absolutely not. I mean, there was, there just didn't even wanna be any discussion. It was, no. One of the responses when I asked the second time was, you need to understand that the police department's dispatchers are making more money than my firefighters are. So no, we're not giving up anything.
So Greg, you understand that they have been in discussions?
Yeah, what I'm looking at is the number of people that needs to be on duty.
We've had the Kramer report.
Which said six.
But that's all.
That, it still said six minimums, so right now we're at the minimum.
So the thing is, we didn't say more.
We didn't go for more. We went for the minimum, because that was what we promised the people in the county, that's what we promised the people in the city, that we would do that six minimum.
The thing is, if you have, this is.
Greg? Mr. White, would you please come to the podium?
Greg White, 1125 Hellcrest Drive. So when the Fire Department has to do a transport, okay, for, to Galleon, okay, it's a minimum of two medics on that vehicle. Not two EMTs and one medic, it has to be two medics for that critical transport that comes out of Bucyrus that goes to the cast lab at Galleon, okay? That's 60 minutes of time to save someone's life, okay? That's all you get. So there's two of your medics already down. Okay? So in a nutshell, you're gonna need that six people on duty at all times, no matter what. You get a bus accident, you get a truck car crash, okay? So now what's the response times for Homestownship? You know, once they're paged out, get to the station, get the vehicle, get to the scene. You're talking, Mr. Mallard, eight, 10 minutes?
To get to the station.
To get to the station? Okay. Brain dies within three to five minutes, sir, okay? So what I'm looking at is this, the response time to a medical emergency that people are paying a tax on for these services to the West District, and the citizens of Bucyrus, okay, are expecting a certain level of service. Plain and simple. All right? So if you don't have a minimum of six people, okay, you're gonna have to wait for, let's see, the next closest squad is Galleon, or medic unit is Galleon. The next one closer than that is First Consolidated out of Caledonia.
So if we got two people out, four in there, we're saying?
At least you got, at least you got a medical services vehicle ready to respond.
Each vehicle has to have at least two people.
Has to have two people by state law.
So what I'm looking at, though, would.
So if you've got one out, you still have the ability?
If you have one out, then another one.
You have the ability for?
Other people are on call to come in to cover those.
But the only thing is, they have to be paged in. City firemen have to have an all-call to come in, okay? Well, what if they're on vacation? What if they're sick? You don't know their response. You can't predict that. That's like saying, yes, they're all gonna come in, you can't predict that.
I can't predict anything.
Well, I understand that. But what I'm saying is, minimum six people, if you're doing one of those transports, or whatever, then you have that third vehicle or other vehicle ready to respond to any medical emergency within the city or the ambulance district, okay? So if you're looking at this, First Consolidated, are we gonna get any help from Upper Sandusky? Maybe not. They don't have medic service over there, sir, okay? They don't have, there's some, some people are medics, but they don't have them on call, or on duty. So where are you gonna get the other help?
In Bucyrus, we have 19 firefighters.
Right, but only six are on duty per 24-hour shift.
Right, so if two go out, two can be called in.
Well, that's gonna create overtime. If you read the contracts, sir, and they're paid a minimum amount, a minimum number of hours.
When they're called in.
When they're called in. So then you're gonna have more overtime, every time that goes out. Okay? So you gotta go back to the contract, where it says, you know, call in, they're paid X amount of overtime dollars per whatever, how many hours their minimum call is. I don't know if it's two or four. You'd have to research the contract. And then bring it with me tonight. I have one. So there, you're looking at more overtime. Where if you're just keeping six people on, you're minimizing that. And then, if the city gets in a situation, they do have mutual aid. Okay? They do have mutual aid with Galleon, they do have mutual aid with Homestownship, okay? So response times are critical to anybody, and everybody, community and the joint ambulance district. You have to look at the overall picture. I mean, you're throwing dollars and cents at people's lives, okay? Maybe there's a way to work this out, maybe there's not. But what I'm asking is that this be tabled until true facts and figures can be put on table, on record, that these are the numbers, actual facts and figures. Thank you.
Ms. Sherrick?
I was saying, I'm pretty sure that when we looked at this the last time, both Kevin and I both said neither one of us would repeal it without having something to replace it with. They said they'd come back with ideas, coming back with nothing, and still asking us to do it was kind of against what was asked for.
Um, in response to that comment, I did receive a phone call yesterday from Mr. Myers. He told me how he felt if he were here tonight, how he would vote, and that he was more than happy for me to state what his feelings were. I asked if he would send me an email sending forth what his feelings were. I'm a paper person. I don't wanna sit here and say, this person said that, knowing that that person may come back and say, I didn't say that. I was told that I would have something. Um, I don't know what time I sent a text to Kevin, reminding him of the email that I had asked for him to send. I said he could send me a text. I just wanted something that I could read that were his words. I did not, again, I've received nothing. Based on that, and why I ask for him to do it in writing, I am not going to say how he said he would vote if he were here. But it's not what you said he would do. So at this point in time, I'm asking for a motion to repeal ordinance 12-2023.
Salute.
Do I hear a second?
No.
Now, I ask for a vote?
So Roberts rules, we can vote to break a tie.
Yes, I'm aware of that. So my vote is yes, we repeal ordinance 12-2023 as an emergency. So I guess, now let's see, though, I broke the tie, so there's nothing more to do. It's?
Uh, no, I will have to prepare legislation, and then we will bring that to full council.
Okay. Next, we have open projects. On the open project list, we have some items that we can remove. First, we have the Fire Department staffing. Now, that was back in 2017, and that had to do with the SAFER grant, applying for the SAFER grant, and then it says the city didn't receive the SAFER grant. That can be removed. That doesn't need to be on here, at least in my opinion. The next can be.
Actually, all this should be together, because it's all under Fire Department staffing, so this stuff from 2024 should actually be a part of that, and that was the whole reason, was it an open project, is because it's constantly a question up here. It's more than just the SAFER grant, it was everything about the Fire Department staffing.
Okay, then.
So this stuff should all just be listed down as the other things we've talked about for Fire Department staffing.
Meaning the repealing of ordinance 12, that's the only other thing that's on here?
The contract, the repealing of the, the, yeah. So yeah, the repealing of ordinance 12 is the newest.
So you're saying that would go up underneath?
Yes, it's under.
But we'll be turning around and taking it off. That is, well, yes, depending on, I guess, how legislation goes. Yeah, one way or the other, it's gonna come off. But that's fine, we can move it up there. The update to the property maintenance code, that all had to do with ordinance 53-2023, which the third reading was done at the February 20th, '24 council meeting. So in my opinion, that can come off. The ambulance contract, that was taken care of at our past Tuesday council meeting through Resolution 207-2024, so that can be removed. And that's it. Are you fine with those items that I've indicated? Erin, or Ms. Sherrick?
I'm just looking at how many different times property maintenance code is listed on here, because that's just it, it's.
And, and yes, I've had a problem with these.
It should all be listed together.
Definitely.
As one. So you wouldn't take something off that you're still working on, you're just giving the information of different things you've talked about, about that as you go.
But then you've got.
It gives you timelines, so they should all be together in one timeline, not in four different places, which is what I'd said before when we first got these a while ago, but I hadn't really looked at each one to compile them, because everybody was taking off and putting on, and I was waiting to see where we ended before we made it nice.
So then you're wanting where we've got International Property Maintenance Code, which, keep in mind, this is under the Health and Safety Committee, and we are proposing to do an ad hoc committee for this very issue.
That'll go right back to the Health and Safety when you get the information from the ad hoc, because it still has to be passed by Health and Safety.
So are you asking for the International Property Maintenance Code that was put on?
Needs to stay on here.
Excuse me, I'm not done talking. That was placed on the agenda on February the 6th, 2024. You are asking for that to be moved up to the International Property Maintenance Code section that's dated 7/7/2016? Is that what you are asking?
That was an obvious statement, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we all understood. Are you fine with that, Jim?
Yes, I'm good.
Great. Okay, we're done with the open projects. Any more public participation? Mr. Long?
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street. I didn't know where to discuss this. A few minutes ago, we were talking about the roster and the fine for non-performance by the landlords for the tenant roster.
Oh, sure, yes, yes.
So I do have, I do have a couple of suggestions. They're sort of, they're sort of a mixed bag. Some are good, some are bad, but they're all, they're all, I think, appropriate. Jim Mees' comment about the, if I pay a water bill, and then, let's just say, a year later, this person pops out the pumpkin patch and, you know, they're able to pay, or whatever, that is never gonna happen. So that's a waste of council time, to think that there's somebody in this, in this building that's watching that stuff and saying, oh, we got one for Kent, or anybody else.
Yeah.
That, you know, once they, once they cash out downstairs, they're done. Once they, once they got somebody on the hook for that money, it's a done deal. So that's reality. That's, so, all right. My only concern with the roster, I understand the need for the roster. I never did before, until I started coming to council meetings a few months ago, because I didn't think I had a, I had a legal obligation to take care of city business, okay? But now that I understand that there's out-of-town people working and may not be paying tax, then that's, that's probably, that's pretty legit. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm glad to help that kind of thing, okay? Because it's helping all of us. Okay? But I don't know legally if I can give you that list as a city, okay? And so I would question the law director to do research on that, because I could rattle off, you know, 20 names of people who live in my houses, I don't know if I'm allowed to give you that, from a privacy point of view, okay? Then also, nobody's ever discussed social security numbers, okay? Because I'm pretty sure I can't do that, okay? And so you're gonna get a great name that matches 15 people within four counties of here. So it's good, it's better than what we have right now, but it's not, it's not, definitely not perfect, without, without social security number. And I'm definitely not advocating giving out social security numbers, but I don't know how we're going to get to that right person to do it. Then, along with, in that same vein, if you have one person on a water bill, you know, I don't, I don't furnish water, okay? So all my places, they pay their own water, okay? But that's only one person's name you have on the hook, okay? I would say almost 95% of the places have more than one person living there, which means you have no rec, you have no, you should, you should be asking for all the, I guess, adults that live in the home, rather than, than, than the person on the lease. Because there could be two different things. They may not all be on a lease. You could have grandpa there, you could have the granddaughter living there, you could have a lot of things. Well, those people could be actively working someplace, so. I bring these things up not to, not to poke at you, I'm trying, I'm trying to help the cause, because, you know, I'm, I'm in the field, okay? So I, I know what's going on in people's homes and stuff. So I, I know what's going on in people's homes and stuff. And if you're not in that business, you wouldn't think about the things I'm, I'm trying to portray here. So there's more people than at home than just the people on the water bill.
It is.
All right.
Does require tenants. So even if you're not on the lease, so everybody on the lease technically would be a tenant. And I understand, yeah, so you also have a lot of unauthorized occupants hanging out there as well.
Sure.
But you and I both don't know who those people are all the time.
Right.
It's not perfect.
It won't, it'll never be perfect, but it could be. If we get the thing fine tuned up front, it'd be a lot better than, oh, we should have done this two years ago, that kind of thing. The law director touched on, you know, the fee per landlord or how that, how that's set up. That's, that's going to be a dicey thing because if, say, somebody has 10 and somebody else has 110, I don't know if the fee, the fee should definitely be different. I think probably the only fair way to do that would be based on the number of incident, or how many, how many, how many, how many units a person has. And so that would get, you know, the big corporation out of Columbus that has 120 units on the south end of town, you know, that'd get their attention pretty fast because if they don't comply with one, they're probably not going to comply with the other 109, okay? So, you know, if it's a hundred dollars a piece or whatever the figure is. When I first read this $500 thing, you definitely got my attention, okay? I, you know, I, and I know somebody's just trying to, you know, get this thing off the ground, but that, that's pretty stiff. That, that'll, that'll probably have some resistance, so, but uh, it, it probably should be based on per unit. So it's not, okay. Also, um, discussion is on this, on November 30th is a, is a drop dead day. Tenants move anytime during the year. And so, for example, this is almost first of March. Somebody moves in first of March, well, they may be gone by the first of August, okay? You know, some people save for years, some people save for months, whatever. And so my suggestion would be that if we are going to register them, we need to register them within three days of them occupying that unit. That way the city gets to hold that information a lot quicker than just once a year and in theory, somebody could have fell off the truck in the meantime. Uh, let's see. I guess I got, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
Ron Miller, Homestownship, Secretary of Treasury of the Crawford County West Hammonds District. Just a couple of things to reiterate, as Mel told you, we've had a great relationship with the SARS Fire. It's worked, it's flawless. Uh, they work well with fire departments. We couldn't ask for any more with, uh, from Chief Swimley. Comes to our meetings, gives us full reports, we never had that before. But I, I just want to reiterate, if you're going to renegotiate in the contract that we went with Chad, to negotiate with Chad at our January meeting, which you were at, that subsidy, we are figuring on six men per shift. If that's going to drop, that's going to change that contract. So keep that in mind, we're figuring on six, six firemen on, that's what it's been and that's what we, and I know that's not spelled out in that contract and we're going to talk to our legal counsel about that, hopefully middle of next week. And Mr. White mentioned if you would call in Homestownship if you dropped. I want to make very clear to you, Homestownship is not in the EMS business. Yes, we have a squad, we bought that before we ever came with the city because of some conflicts with the other provider when the Crawford, when the whole county was in the district. But we are a volunteer fireman and I can guarantee you that, I cannot guarantee you that anybody's going to show up. And we are not ALS service, so I don't bank on that as a backup if you drop staff. I want to make that perfectly clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, oh, sorry Kurt.
Kurt Fankhouser, 616 Prospect, just following up with some of the stuff Ken was saying. I've thought about this thing with the tenant roster and where it's at in the tax, income tax office or does it need to be in utility office? And I think there's incentive to the landlord, if done correctly, to provide the tenant roster to the city. And that incentive in my mind is it gives the landlord the ability to say, well, here's who's occupying the structure so that when this issue with the international property maintenance code comes up of certain things saying that the occupant's responsible for and then Brian says, well, I don't know who the occupant is, so I just mail the letter to who owns the property. But if, if the city can make a procedure officially at the utility office to where Mr. Ken Long would provide and say, hey, here's who's occupying this structure. I have leased it to them, you know, it's going to stay in the utility office officially, but then the income tax office can make an inter-office request for that document and then they can pull that over to themselves and see who they need to be sending an income tax notice out to. The benefit to Mr. Ken Long is now, or any other landlord, is the city can officially, with an official document that's been provided to the city, say for those instances of uh, international property maintenance code that a occupant like mowing the grass should be doing. They now have an official document to say, oh, we're going to mail it to them because they're the occupant. Does that make any sense? So I think if the city would work smartly with the creation of a single document that's shared between two offices, you, you might be taking care of like three different problems here at the same time. So that's just a suggestion.
Thank you. Sure.
Ken Long, 625 South Spring. Kurt brought up a point and I had a, I guess, a ha, aha moment. We're talking about these tenants that are, need registered so we can get to their income tax money or to their, their tax money. Well, we're missing 90% of the families in the house in, in town here, who's registering homeowners? You know, the homeowners have an average of four people living in their home. Let's just say only two of them work and you've got one person on the hook for a water bill. You know, this, this, this could really grow, okay? I don't mean that in a bad way, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's easy to point fingers at the, at the tenants and I'm, and I'm, I'm cool. They, they need to be registered, okay? I, I'm, I'm wholeheartedly agreement, but you've got a whole bunch of homeowners that have adult age kids now. You know, I mean, if they lived there an average of 20 years, they probably have adult age kids living at home, working in Delaware, what, you know, whatever they're doing, driving home. That, that, it isn't just tenants, that's why, that's why I'm getting at. So whatever you guys put together, good luck with how you, how you administer that, but I mean, it, it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public participation? Seeing no one, we'll adjourn the Health and Safety Committee meeting at 7:02 PM.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, February 22nd, 2024.
I'm going to call Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order at 7:05 PM. Members present Zion Hickman, Carolyn Shireman, Chris Moritz and myself, Ciaran Shereka is chair. Do we have any public participation for Public Lands and Buildings? Seeing none, um, I would uh entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from February 8th, 2024.
I'm making a motion.
I have a motion to approve the minutes for February 8th, 2024 for the regular Public Lands and Buildings from Mr. Moritz. Do I have a second?
Second.
With a segment, with a second from Mr. Hickman? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Minutes approved. So do we have anything to talk about on the open projects list?
I think that the old water tower plot on West, East Warren? Charles? Warren. East Warren. So the AT&amp;T wanted to put a tower there. A year or two ago, we talked about splitting those lots and then it came out that there was water infrastructure. I talked to Mr. Ernstberger and if the city were so inclined to move forward with either leasing that or um, selling those lots, the infrastructure isn't too difficult to remove and it's not vital. We don't need it for the city to, to use. It's not like stuff is running through it, it's just there. So he could pull it out if need be.
So we could go forward with looking at optional lease options? So what will we need to do to uh, push that forward? Just start the conversation and?
Yeah, I think Mary, Mayor Truca had referred, because he had some information about AT&amp;T and then a year ago, we talked about splitting those lots and selling them as building lots. So I suppose you guys can all think about that and then when we come back two weeks from now, maybe have some discussion on if there's something to do with that. But it is doable, unless Tommy tells me it's not doable.
Well, Tommy, what's up?
Tommy Stiner, Service Safety Director. So the Warren Street property has a potential to get AT&amp;T tower on it. That's why this is kind of being brought up now. They will give us, we will sign a lease with them, not sell them the land on that particular one. But I mean, we have more properties around here that could possibly do the same or some, something similar also. So that's, that's all I got.
Do we have any ideas to what kind of figures or are we going to have to put it out to bid for?
I, I think it has to go out to bid. I, I'm pretty sure.
I know we can do a minimum bid, so if we had an idea as to figures, but.
Yeah, I don't know what the AT, or the Verizon one is back here, I wasn't.
Yeah, so we have information on what we could put as a reserve.
So we, we can get some more information together and bring it back up maybe next time? So we can get the ball rolling? That'd be awesome, thank you.
There's potential for other.
Potential's good.
Other things to happen also, so.
Awesome. All right, do we have anything else on open projects? No? Any public participation?
Ken Long, 625 South Spring Street, just a quick comment. When you're on East Mansfield Street, uh, down there close to where Weber's uh, uh, service station is, prop the land along the river, that's, that's, it'd be north of. East, Weber's is on East Mansfield. Before you get, wait before you get to Carley's. Underneath the overpasses, wait, wait, yeah, once you, once you cross the overpasses.
Mel's, I'm like, who's Weber's?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, Mel's, okay, I apologize. Anyway, there's, there's land along the river and I'm going to guess it's probably considered wetland or whatever kind of land. Is that anything that could be, you know, sold, leased, rented, whatever, uh, just to generate some cash?
Back behind Carley's? Because Mayor Truca owns some of that.
No, it's more where the, where the train overpasses are and the river sort of meet, that, that area down there. It, it has quite a slope to it because the next thing is the river. So I'm saying along the rivers, it's a, it's a pretty wide area and I thought that might be, you know, your cell, cell phones or cell towers or uh, solar or whatever in that area because it, it's probably not going to be developed because it's too low, it's too low.
I'm not sure, Mr. Dunn, I don't think we own that, but.
Oh, okay, I, I didn't know, I, I just assumed it was.
You're talking on the east side of the tracks?
Yes, well, west, west side of the tracks.
West side of the tracks, so that's all owned by Mark Quinn.
Okay, all that, that low land, that low area, okay, all right. I just happened to be over in that area. Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Vicki Deschawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. At the Tuesday's council meeting, I was approached by Ray Thitoff and he was wondering if the Public Lands and Buildings Committee minutes for January the 18th, which have already been approved, if possibly they could be amended because they make reference, they're giving him credit for something that he said, I didn't do. He goes, and I don't want to take the credit, you know, from somebody else. So I believe Miranda has in her possession the minutes and the area that's to be amended. I don't, and, and I had an email out to Mr. Gernert and he just said a simple motion to repeal the previously approved minutes and replace them with the amended minutes would be sufficient and to correct this error.
Do we have those done already or? So can we just put it on the next time to repeal and replace those amended minutes? That'd be great.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else for public participation? Okay, seeing none, I am going to adjourn at 7:12 PM.
Plating Committee, February 22nd, 2024.
Plating come to order at 7:14. Public participation for plating.
Good evening, JD Hoard, 1285 Wyandotte Road, SARS Township trustee. Just following up on our February 8th, I think it was February 8th, discussion on the annexation issue, if there's any updates. We have a meeting next Tuesday, I just want to update the rest.
Mr. Mader has been contracted to handle and uh, he got the legislation in a little bit late, so it didn't make last agenda, but it's all done. I think council will pass it or have the opportunity to pass it March 6th. I think it's Wednesday because of election day. I don't know, March 5th or 6th, 5th is the Tuesday, but I think it might be the 6th because of the election.
That'd be the next regularly.
Next regularly scheduled council meeting, yeah. They, Mr. Mader has all of the stuff prepared and Matt got him the agreement with the changes that Mrs. Deschawn. Matt didn't get you the, Matt sent the changes to Mr. Mader and myself and I will forward them to Mrs. Deschawn and the rest of the plating committee.
Because what I was given, that Mr. Mader dropped off, the agreement does not have the changes and he's already signed it.
Oh, okay, I will, he must have, I'll get with Mr. Mader.
Okay, just a reminder, the timing is, I don't know, I don't know if there's a critical date. The auditor could answer that, the county auditor, but if we could keep it moving, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can always call a special meeting if we have to.
Well, I don't know if it's that. I would have to talk to the auditor and find out if there's any hard date, but I don't, I don't think it's that terrible, you know, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, approval of minutes for February 8th, 2024, regular plating meeting, committee meeting.
I move to approve the February 8th, 2024 regular plating committee meeting minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Uh, 2024 street program.
All right, Dylan Wyatt, McKeever and Associates. So as Jeff alluded to earlier, we would like to propose a few changes to the 2024 street program, mainly to accommodate some sewer separation projects that we are planning to do in the next three years up at the northeast portion of town. What we would be removing from the previously planned street program is Lawn Avenue from Sandusky to Maple, Emerson Street from Sandusky to Maple, Maple from the north end to Irving and Woodrow from the north end to Irving. And we would instead be replacing that with Poplar Street from Oakwood to Charles. There is a slight increase in the cost. Currently in the budget is, I'll grab the right paper here, $740,000?
Yes.
And it is approximately a. $797,000 with contingency with these changes. So the plan would be then that Lawn Avenue would get paved in 2025 with the Phase 1 of the Northeast Sewer Separation. Woodrow would get paved in '26 with the Northeast Separation Phase 2. Emerson would also be paved in '26 with Phase 2. And then Maple Street would be paved in 2027 with Phase 3. The roughly $57,000 increase in price is in the streets budget under outside contractors. So it would just be moving money from, using the money from the outside contractors line in order to fulfill the BO for the project. So I believe Service Director printed you off. The color copy, yeah, so in our Christmas spirit here, the green is 2025.
2024, sorry.
And the red is the start of 2025. We haven't finalized what we're looking at for 2025, but that's just where we're at currently.
Any questions? Appreciate the update.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, zoning and solar panels, I, I'm putting together some stuff. I'm working with the zoning department and it's gonna have to do with the R1, R2, R3 zoning. It's gonna be all the setbacks that they include. And if anybody has anything else that, that zoning for solar panels should involve, just let me know. That way I can put it all together. Give it to Mr. Gernert and let him sort it all out.
I do have a question, Mr. Me. Do we have to approve this revised street program? Cause I know we do legislation when we.
I believe that, I don't think you have to.
Okay.
We just, we want to, well, just tell you how much we're supposed to spend on the, on the project. I don't think we named the streets at that time.
Okay, okay. So in other words, we don't need any legislation at all?
So you approved the finance and the basic package back when we did that? And it's sort of an administrative function to make those decisions about which streets. And I think they presented the package as an informational thing, but they're not, we don't specifically approve that portion of it.
So it's also in the finance committee? So why is it in the finance committee?
I think that Mr.
Nothing else, by mistake.
Okay.
I think that Mayor Truka was.
At the time of the referral, we weren't sure if Jeff's budget had the money in it or if we were going down to increase the budget. So that's why I went to finance also more out of a caution.
Got it.
I didn't have my estimate quite.
That's fine. Great, thank you.
I know on the solar zoning, I now have a note to look up some zoning stuff. So we'll get back, but I, when I saw it, I remembered it.
I'm just gathering a little bit of information here and there, whatever's pertinent, I'm putting it in a pile and someday I'm gonna hand out all of it to you, so.
Yeah.
Any other comments on the solar panels? Seeing none, open projects.
Can you hit refer? 189 point something. Oh, three, parking lots.
Yes.
Which would also then, if we get that and the solar panel stuff. Yeah, so.
When I get a pile of it, I'll.
Right, we'll have a public hearing.
There you go. Anything on open projects? Nothing? Public participation? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 7:23?
Meeting February 22nd, 2024.
I will call Economic Development at 7:24. Members' presence are Vicki Deshawn, Carolyn Shireman, Christopher Moritz and myself, Zion Hickman Chair. Do we have any public participation? Seeing none, I will move to the approval of minutes from the February 8th, 2024 Regular Economic Development Meeting.
Make a motion to approve February 8th, 2024 minutes?
Shireman. My second.
Okay, I have a first from Mr. Moritz and a second from Ms. Shireman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes proved. Moving on to open projects. I was going to look at Jed last week and I had the opportunity to look at it this week. Have not dug that much into it so far. I'm hoping that I'll have enough information to talk about it. Next committee meeting, this is something that I would be interested in looking into as far as helping revenues. Does anyone else have anything for open projects? Public participation for economic development. Seeing none, I will adjourn at 7:26.
Meeting February 22nd, 2024.
We have, Kevin Myers is not here. I'll chair today. I'm pro Tim, James Me, Christopher from Moritz, Vicki Deshawn. And the meeting will start at 7:30. Public participation?
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. What I want to talk about is the bed tax, which is on the agenda tonight, okay? Obviously, there is some issues with the Bureau of Tourism and Visitors Bureau. And I'm going to ask this committee to forward on to the mayor to ask the State Attorney General's Office and the State Auditor's Office to come in and do an investigation into that agency for the money that was, has been given to them, given to them in the past.
I talked to him. I talked to that lady twice since Tuesday's meeting. She's got the money.
Okay, so, but I also want to point out something else that I don't believe has been done. Section 717.20, Expending Funds for Promotion of Tourism in the High Rise Code. It states in there, semi annual reports are to be used of expenditures shall be made to the legislative authority by the chief officer implementing the joint agreement or the chief officer or board of directors of a private or nonprofit organization. I have never, ever heard or seen any such semi annual report. Does anybody have any records of those reports to this legislative?
She's gonna start, that was one of our conversations.
Okay, so, but there's.
She's gonna show up, she'll, she'll show up quarterly, monthly, whatever we want.
Okay, but I'm asking for, is there anything in the past?
I can't.
That's what I'm talking about. There's no, they, they're required by state statute to do a semi annual report.
I'm not disagreeing.
So, and there is no copies or any information on any of those semi annual reports?
Yeah, I don't know that, I assume that we did not get those. So I think that with the new director of the Chamber and the Besarison Tourism Bureau, that's something that we'll have to dig into.
Right. So the other thing I'd like to also propose is that nothing should be done about the bed tax until everything has been brought out into the public. Everything, so that no money is given out bed tax to anybody until, you know, all the facts and figures come out, open transparency to the community.
Fifty percent of that goes to the parks.
Right.
So, just so you know.
Yeah, but I'm just saying is, I'm, I'm sure the residents of Besaris are due their time to understand all the facts and figures, just like you guys are. Thank you.
Thanks.
Kurt, excuse me, Kurt Fankhouser, 616 Prospect. There's been a lot of public participation when we have the council meetings. People come up and they bring up the, the out of town income tax credit. And I hear a lot of times, and I have been contacted by some people, not during the meeting, say, would this, we'd be fine with it if it was just 1% or, or half of it, not the full thing. So, you know, I thought about that and what you had found, Jim, with, you know, on the Rita, the majority of the other communities was at like 0.87 or so, I believe you said.
Yeah.
Of the credit, so I.
Or 0.089, something like that.
I, what's that?
Is this on the agenda for tonight?
Well, it's an open project. It's still in the open projects.
That's why I was wondering.
No, it's not on the agenda tonight. I, I just wanted to ask the finance committee if they would possibly consider, instead of that full credit, which was entertained as a motion once, could it maybe be relooked at as half credit? And maybe even doing it, I guess it's up to you guys, but I was gonna suggest 24 months temporarily. And then that way it just gets us through the crunch here. And because it looked like the last finance committee meeting, finance committee was heading towards like a property tax possible levy, but knowing that that wouldn't bring in anything until like early 2026, you know, that still is gonna have the whole 2025 year is kinda, are we gonna be able to get through? So I guess maybe to appease the public, because they think we're trying to go after the full, that full 2%, maybe could you guys maybe look at doing half of it? Just for 24 months? And then if it's an issue again, you redress it again, but because I think a lot of people still think that we're wanting to do the full 2% and they're kind of scared about that. But that's, that's it.
I love you, Kurt, but I disagree with you. I think since we got a state auditor here coming in or here, whatever, I don't think we need to change anything until we see what the state auditor says. Sorry.
Well, from what I've read on that, all the state auditors coming in, they're just gonna tell us to fix our problems.
But we don't know that's hearsay.
That's what I've read on the state websites and stuff, so that's, that's the only thing I've got to go by.
Why didn't we call them if it's hearsay? Why didn't we call a state auditor and if all they say is hearsay, we fix our problems?
I never, I never said hearsay. It's on the state.
We're paying them to say, fix your problem? I don't think so.
Tommy, did you meet with?
But they, so originally, what they're going to do is have the city, through the administration, prepare a plan of action.
Right.
About, you know, if, and I think this is probably a good idea regardless, but, you know, where we're spending too much, what we can cut, how we can generate revenue, all of those things. So, I mean, I, we can do this now or later or never do it, I don't know. But yeah, so when, in the, when the auditor comes in, they're also, with bringing them in is, how are you guys going to fix your own issues? And that's what the mayor, I think within 30 days of sending off that letter, we had to submit that report to the state. Take it away.
All right, Tommy Starner, Service Safety Director. So I met with the auditor the other day when Kayla had him in. He, or she said that you guys still have to fix these problems. It's, they're, they're gonna, they're not even gonna give you suggestions. You're gonna have to give them suggestions on what to do. You still have to do what you gotta do. They're not gonna fix it for you. And then if we don't abide by in 30 days and if they do come in, and then it's, everything is gone, so.
I'm still a no on the taxes, town tax. I will stay a no.
So you're, okay, let's move on. We have approval of the minutes for January 18th, 2024. Approval of the minutes on January 31st, 2024. Approval for the minutes for February 8th, 2024. Can I have a motion to?
I collectively.
Awesome.
Or I move to collectively approve the January 18th, 2024 Regular Finance Committee Meeting Minutes, the January 31st, 2024 Special Finance Committee Meeting Minutes, and the February 8th, 2024 Regular Finance Committee Meeting Minutes.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What's next? Well, 189 penalties and fees, we haven't decided whether there was gonna be one or not. So we're just gonna pass on that one? Appropriating money from Mark's grant.
Our fire department received Mark's grant, that's for radio communication equipment and things to be used like that. The check we received was for $18,502.40. And we have revenueed it in, we're just trying to bring it into the budget. So we would like to appropriate it into General Fund 101 Program Security of Persons and Property under 7115, the Fire Department, and under the item 23 Contractual Services. Any questions? As an emergency, if that's possible.
I move that we appropriate $18,502.40 into the contractual services line item, which is within the Fire Department category, which is in the Program 1 Security of Persons and Properties subparagraph, as an emergency.
Go have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Street program, we've already been through that. Next on the list is bed tax. So. Anybody have any discussion on the bed tax?
Pretty much sure we're covered all, already with the participation of the public here.
This, Mrs. Deshawn sent me an email referencing the old one. And I forget what year, but like 2019 or 20 something. They sort of changed a bunch of the code that we had been using. And there are a bunch of references to different sections. And so I don't know that right now, we're at a point where we want to move forward, but I would like to review sort of all of those.
I also like to review a one-year contract instead of a three.
Two-year, right.
Or instead of a two-years.
Yeah, and we can do that. I mean, I don't think that there's a reason that we have to do multi-year.
Okay, good.
But, yeah, which Mrs. Deshawn brought that to my attention. I, yeah, there's a lot in there that I had never seen.
Any more discussion on the bed tax? Go to its table. Go to its table. Open projects. Anything? Finance, open projects?
No, I have nothing.
Anything, Chris?
No.
Public participation? Any public participation? Meeting's adjourned at seven-forty-two.